Clerk Seegrist, can you please call everyone to order? It's a roll call.
Borninsky.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Clerk, uh, Trustee Foster is not in attendance. Ganguly.
Good evening.
Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Seegrist is in attendance. Uh, Trezor Slavens. And Trustee Snyderman.
I am present.
Thank you. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda with a slight change to item G2, which is just, I believe, an account number update. Is that correct, Victor and Wendy? Item G2? Okay.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the agenda.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seegrist, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Agenda is adopted. Can I have a motion to move into closed session at 6:33?
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to go into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute, and particularly the discussion of attorney's written legal memorandum under MCL 15.268, subsection H, and to discuss pending litigation in the case of Hunter v. Canton Township; and finally, for the third reason, to discuss the purchase or lease of real property.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seegrist, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay.
That's a roll call.
Do we need a roll call for this one? To go into closed session?
Why not?
Okay.
Snyderman.
Aye. You gotta go backwards now.
Aye.
Slavens.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seegrist, aye. Ganguly.
Aye.
Okay, great. We're going to close session. We'll be right back. And there is an order to this one. So the first one...
Oh, that worked. Now it's on. Thank you, whoever. We were done a while ago, but we didn't think John and Ann had enough time to catch up with each other. So we just wanted to give them a few.
Yeah, we gave us like 21 minutes.
Okay, we'll be back. Oh, okay. Which one is it? See, made it so Ann has to stay through the whole meeting? Nice. All good. Is that a roll call or that's just a regular vote, right, Michael?
What's that?
To have, it has to be unanimous or?
What's that?
To have you recuse yourself?
I need to get me out of the way of the work.
I think it just has to be unanimous, I thought.
Okay.
It will be.
Oh, that's okay. Take your time. I wasn't hitting it to make you start running. I thought we had someone else still.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board return to open session.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Berninski. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion passes. And then do we have another motion?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board amend the agenda as previously approved, adding item G zero to authorize counsel to negotiate toward settlement in the FP Development v. Canton lawsuit as discussed in closed session.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion passes. Okay, great. The next thing on the item is public comment on agenda items only. So we can have public comment on agenda items only and we will have an additional public comment at the end also. But for anyone that wants to comment on public items only, I'm looking at attendees right now. If you want to raise your hand, if you want to comment on public, comment on agenda items only. And I don't see any hands raised. Public comment, public comment. Again, we'll have public comment at the end. Okay, great. Thank you. All right, next item, payment of bills.
Madam Supervisor.
Says none. None were submitted.
Pass the test, sorry.
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Bills are paid. Motion passes. Next item is a motion on the consent calendar.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as presented. Item C one, consider resolution for the Township Board to be the adopting body for the master plan and to establish a master plan advisory board. Uh, C two, consider approval of professional services agreement for master plan consulting services. Item C three, consider approval of the purchase of 20-ton tag-along tilt-top equipment trailer. Item C four, consider approval of a 2023 vector combination sewer cleaning truck and an associated budget amendment to the 2022 water and sewer budget. C five, consider authorization of permit for the 2022 Liberty Fest fireworks display. All right. Item C six, consider request to increase a purchase order issued to partners in architecture. C seven, consider the purchase of a one-year extended warranty for 800 megahertz radios. Item C eight, consider, sorry, resolution of support for Michigan Township Association's Robert E. Robinson Scholarship Application. Item C nine, consider approval to create Fund 260 Indigent Defense Fund and associated budget.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Berninski. All those in favor of the consent calendar say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion passes. Next item is the general calendar. Item G one, consider.
Zero.
Oh, G zero.
Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize the council to negotiate toward a settlement in FP Development v. Canton as discussed during closed session.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item G one, consider award of a contract to Cadillac Asphalt for the 2022 major roads asphalt project for the 2022 road improvement program and approve a contract amendment with Fishback LLC for construction, engineering, and testing.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board trustees of the Charter Township of Canton um, to approve a purchase order and award a contract with Cadillac Asphalt uh, for the 2022 major roads, um, asphalt project construction in the amount of $657,750.44 plus a 10% contingency of $65,775 for a total of $723,525.44 from the fund balance, the fund listed.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The design for the 2022 major roads asphalt project on Warren Road, which is Lily to Hagerty, was completed by our engineering design consultant, Fishback Incorporated, in January of 2022. Project was publicly bid in March of this year and six contractors submitted bids on April 21st, 2022, ranging from $657,750 to $861,328. Cadillac Asphalt Incorporated was the apparent low bidder at $657,750.44. Fishback evaluated the bids and recommends an award to Cadillac Asphalt. Engineering Services recommends award of this contract to Cadillac Asphalt. Engineering Services also recommends approval of a contract amendment with our engineer, engineer Fishback LLC for construction, engineering, and testing on this project. Director Smith, do you want to add anything?
Um, no, I think that pretty much spells it out and details it. This will be the last major road, major road project for 2022.
Any questions from the board? All in favor of the first motion, say aye.
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 Oppose nay. First motion passes.
Madam Supervisor, I move the board trustees approve a contract amendment and purchase order with Fishback LLC under their existing master services agreement for CE Services for the 2022 major roads asphalt project in the amount of $104,508 plus a 10% contingency of $10,451 for a total of $114,959 from the fund balance listed.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion passes. Next item.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the attached, um, hang on, I'm flying solo here. I move that the board adopt the attached budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Next item is G two, request to purchase computer workstation replacements.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board create a new purchase order to Dell computers in an amount not to exceed $80,678.16 from the account number listed to cover the cost of replacement laptops, computers, and displays.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Ganguly. IT Services is seeking to replace older, out-of-warranty computer workstations, which are scheduled for replacement in 2022. The computer pricing is derived from the state of Michigan purchasing contract negotiated with Dell Computers. For this reason, IT Services is requesting that a purchase order be approved for the amounts and specifications listed in the quote. The total amount not to exceed $80,678.16 was included in the 2022 IT Services budget, approved by the board. Director Abagbo, do you have anything to add?
Not really. It's clear.
Any questions from the board? Comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item G three, request to upgrade cybersecurity subscription levels.
Madam Supervisor, I move to create a purchase order to No Before Inc. in an amount not to exceed $12,993 to cover the cost of increasing user training licenses for the duration of the township's current agreement.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Berninski. IT Services is seeking to upgrade, I'm sorry, something popped in front of my screen. The current number of user subscription licenses for the existing cybersecurity training solution, No Before. The township is currently in year two of a five-year agreement with No Before. With the recent increase in the number of employees who will receive Office 365 email, our current No Before eligible user count is insufficient to meet the needs of all employees who will be assigned new Office 365 email accounts. The importance of cybersecurity training cannot be underestimated. The township is constantly the target of simultaneous phishing campaigns by bad actors looking to gain a foothold within township computer networks or gain access to employee credentials. This training has proven very beneficial to the organization as it has raised employee awareness immensely since adopted in 2020. The recently approved CantonMI.gov migration project currently underway necessitates that the township provide cybersecurity training to all employees who will be provided access to Office 365 services. Director Abagbo, do you have anything to add?
I just want to make it, um, clear again that No Before is something that is very important in our environment. Uh, it helps us to be in front, in front of the bad guys.
Great. Any comment, questions? Kate?
I just wanted to say thank you, um, for continuing to be vigilant on this. I myself received a phishing email yesterday, so. a phishing email yesterday, so.
I just want to also, like trustee Berninski had said, it's, this is very important, and I know every once in a while we, we are tested on this, and it's, it's very helpful for the staff. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
As they did say, you know, municipalities are one of the highest targets right now. All right, great. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G four, consider approval of fund balance commitments for board-related goals.
Madam Supervisor, I move to commit the unspent fund balance resulting from these projects in the Community Improvement Fund at the end of twenty twenty-two for the following priorities. Sidewalk gaps at half a million dollars over the course of four years for a total of two million dollars. Ridge road development, park development, um, one million dollars. Pocket park development, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Admin building renovations for security, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Cherry Hill Economic Redevelopment, four million dollars. Future, or other future priorities to be identified by the board, one million dollars for a total of eight point eight million dollars, and to approve the attached budget amendment for the spending of the ARPA funds.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by trustee Berninski. In March twenty twenty-one, the federal government awarded Canton Township nearly nine point two million dollar worth of funds through the American Rescue Plans Act, ARPA. Due to discussions happening of the, of the federal level of potentially pulling back unobligated and unspent funds from approximately thirty states, including Michigan, there's an urgency to spend the funds quickly so the residents of Canton benefit completely from the funds that was awarded. In an effort to expeditiously spend the funds, the township will spend the funds utilizing the eligibility guideline, providing governmental services, and reimburse the township's payroll utilizing the unspent funds. This will ensure all funds are spent within the next six months. In doing so, this will free up eight point six million dollars of fund balance that can be utilized for the projects initially identified by the board for their goals for the community. Therefore, we are recommending the board formally commit fund balance for the projects as listed previously in the motion. Should the board approve this plan, the additional one point two million dollar commitment above the award of nine point two million will be funded utilizing existed available fund balance and placed within the township's Community Improvement Fund. It is important to note that the only way the funding can be changed from what the board approves is by a subsequent formal resolution by the board. Additionally, we are asking the board to approve the necessary budget adjustments to accommodate the spending of ARPA dollars as required by the state's Budgeting Act. Director Trumbull, do you want to add anything?
I don't have a lot to add. I think it was a pretty thorough explanation, unless there's questions. But I did want to just clarify on the admin building renovations. There are some security enhancements in there, but there's also some other renovations, not security-related, due to some changes that we made with personnel and needing to make some other renovations. I just want to make sure, as we bring that forward, it won't all be on security.
Any board questions or comments? Steven?
All very valuable items for our community, so I'm excited that we have this money and we're allocating it in this way. When I joined this board, I made it my personal mission to work to increase spending on sidewalk gaps and let it be known that it took less than ten years for me to fulfill that promise. But I'm pretty excited that we're basically upping what we do on sidewalk gaps, I think, almost tenfold with, by, by this action. So I think the community's going to see a real difference out there. It's going to be great.
Else? Michael?
Yeah, I just want to echo that sentiment, not identically, because I have not been on the board for as long as trustee Snyderman, but I do think a two million dollar increase in the amount of money spent closing sidewalk gaps is huge in delivering kind of our board goal of connecting this community together, of improving a livable, walkable community, and of promoting public health. And I think that was perfect that coincided with the pandemic. Seeing one point five million dollars set aside for park development is huge as well, especially as residents come to our community, to our board over and over again requesting and demanding green space and the preservation of green space. That part is huge as well. To see us taking things like public safety, security seriously, yeah, here at the administration building, to see us partnering potentially with Wayne County in their Main Street Grant Program, with the Cherry Hill Village redevelopment project there, that's a huge economic development and to potentially bringing in matching funds from the county is, is huge. And then I know that we had already used some of our ARPA dollars to help with firefighters, police officers, and then employees in general, put money into their pockets as well, which helps with the inflation. So I think, when I think about our values and I see connectivity, sidewalks, I see parks, I see security, I see economic development, and I see personnel, you know, that tells me about our values. We care about the people we work with, we care about the health of our community, we care about green space, and we care about safety, and we care about economic development. So I think this is a great proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Tanya?
Yeah, I echo trustee Snyderman's views on, you know, he's the biggest proponent of the sidewalk gaps, completing them. We all know about that, how, and, you know, and my biggest thing was about the pocket parks and having more parks north of Ford Road, and I have been pushing for that, and I'm really happy that we are getting some funding for the Ridge, Ridge Road Park and other pocket parks, and I'm very excited about that. Of course, we all are excited about the Cherry Hill Development Program, and also this reflects that, the goals that we came in with one year ago, that we are focused on these goals, and we are, we want to make Canton a livable, walkable community where people want to come, people want to live, people want to spend their money, and this is going to be very well-spent money.
Anyone else? Kate?
So I echo what the other trustees have said, but I also wanted to thank Director Trumbull and the supervisor for staying on top of this because we want to make sure that we don't have unobligated funds because we want to be able to use this money for our township. So, thank you.
Yes, and the Congressmen women have been very adamant about us being careful with this because they are coming after thirty states to try to get money back. So I'm glad that we are able to come up with this and follow the board's and the township's goals. And Stephen is so caring about our trails that he's taking us on a bike ride on Thursday if it doesn't rain to show us all the trails and some of the issues that we have along the way. So if the community sees a bunch of people driving around in the rain, no, I'm sorry, if it's not raining, right, if it's not raining with our helmets, we'll be checking.
I have my limits.
We'll be checking out the sidewalk gaps and the trails. All right, great.
And when you say "we," that doesn't necessarily include the clerk, does it?
Well, Stephen has enough bikes.
Municipal Services Department that maintains them that I invited, so.
We're all jumping on.
Yeah.
All right, great. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Great, motion passes. Great, thank you. Item G five, consider approval of a purchase order for sound and lighting support services for the twenty twenty-two Liberty Fest.
Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize the purchase order in the amount of twenty-one thousand eighty-five dollars from the account number listed, professional and contractual services, special events for Great Lakes Sound Incorporated at two-three-zero, Arkell Drive, Toledo, Ohio, four-three-six-zero-seven.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. In April of twenty twenty-two, a request for proposals was solicited for sound and lighting support services for Canton's Liberty Festival. One proposal was received from Great Lakes Sound Incorporated in the amount of twenty-one thousand eighty-five dollars. The proposal includes audio and lighting services for three days at two separate stages, the amphitheater and mobile Canton Live Stage. Great Lakes Sound Incorporated recently provided these services for the fireworks display held last September in Heritage Park, where they performed admirably. Due to their past experience and qualified proposal, Leisure Services is recommending the approval of a purchase order for the sound and lighting support services for the twenty twenty-two Liberty Festival to Great Lakes Sound Incorporated. So does anyone have any questions? We had discussed this earlier, if anyone has questions we can answer.
Yeah, I'm just very excited that Liberty Fest is happening again.
Yes.
Have a lot of people that come to our community for this, and I'm very excited about it.
We're doing the five K this year?
Yes.
Try to run that. Try to run that five K this year.
Ooh. All right, anyone, any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G six, consider approving the purchase of twenty Avail Web Rocket IOT modems and an associated amendment to the twenty twenty-two fire budget.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of twenty Avail Web Rocket LOT modems, or LOT modems, from Utility Associates Incorporated in the amount of fifty-three thousand four hundred dollars and the associated twenty twenty-two amendment to the fire budget as attached.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by trustee Berninski. The Fire Department is requesting to purchase twenty Avail Web Rocket IOT modems with hardware bundles from Utility Associates Incorporated in the amount of fifty-three thousand four hundred dollars. The proposed twenty twenty-three fire budget includes sixty thousand for replacement modems, but the purchase is being requested early as the current units at their end, as the current units at their end of life and unable to provide the service required for large data uploads. An amendment to the twenty twenty-two fire budget is included in this request, and an adjustment will be made to the proposed twenty twenty-three fire budget. Director Stockline, do you want to have anything to add?
I think that says it all. We're just pulling it forward to six months. Basically, those new CPR devices that you guys bought us, we can't get the information off of that, and this will allow us to get that information and upload it to our, our systems. So that's why we're going to pull forward.
Questions or comments from the board? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G seven, consider the purchase of a three-year subscription to Code Red with an associated twenty twenty-two emergency management budget amendment.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of a three-year subscription to Code Red from On Solve for an annual amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars forty-four cents and the, to approve the associated twenty twenty-two emergency management budget amendment as attached.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by trustee Berninski. The Emergency Management Division is requesting to purchase a three-year subscription to Code Red, a mass notification platform provided by On Solve, providing the ability to distribute an unlimited number of messages through a variety of delivery methods. The subscription cost is fourteen thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars and forty-four cents annually for a three-year total of forty-four thousand seven sixty-four and thirty-two cents. In addition, a twenty twenty-two emergency management budget amendment in the amount of six thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars is being requested to accommodate this purchase. The expense will be worked into the pending budgets for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four accordingly. Director Stockline, do you want to add anything?
I'll just say that for those of you that don't know what this system is, it's really going to bring us into the twenty-first century with our alerting, so it's no longer just outdoor warning or Facebook posts and those kind of i-paws. It's really, anybody that has a cellphone in their hands will be able to get a message if they sign up for this, and we'll make a big push at the Liberty Fest. That's why we're kind of, we're getting in front of you here so that we can start getting residents signed up. It's a great system for not only police and fire, but for the entire township, like the, like the RBA states. We'll be able to use it for many things, whether it's voting or precinct changes, whatever we need to use it on. It's really the new tool of the, the new century here. So I think it's going to be wonderful, and now the state police have brought them in. We're receiving a lot of feedback from other communities that are using it, and it's a great feedback. So we look forward to having that for the community and the citizens.
Now, the other day, Will was still trying to get people on Nixle, so then you're going to encourage the people on Nixle to switch to Code Red, if we approach this, correct?
That's correct.
So, but at the Liberty Fest, when you're going to advertise it, are you going to have people still try to get on Nixle, or you're going to have them?
We'll have them signing up directly for Code Red at that point.
Okay, at that point. Okay, great. All right, any questions? Kate?
So I heard that there was a similar service that was used when the tornado hit Gaylord, so I'm just wondering, is that the kind of thing that I'm thinking of, where even before the sirens sounded, people got notifications on their phones?
Yep, that'll be just like that. And we can also use it for like missing endangered teens or children missing, all those things that we can just blast the stuff out to the community and have them be able to be on the lookout for all these things. So it really is a game changer for us where we're not sitting around waiting for that siren to be turned on by the dispatchers anymore. So it'll make, make a big difference.
Road closures, like you do now.
Road closures. We can really use it for, you know, imagination, you know, use it whatever you want for.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G eight, consider the purchase of sixteen Taser X twenty-six P units and accessories.
Madam Supervisor, I move to waive the bidding process and approve the purchase of sixteen Taser X two-six P, or twenty-six P, units and accessories from the sole source vendor Axon Enterprise Incorporated in the amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars fifty-two cents, utilizing funds in the twenty twenty-two police budget.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Police Department is requesting to purchase sixteen Taser X two-six P units, accessories, and warranties from Axon Enterprise Incorporated in the amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents. Axon Enterprise Incorporated is proprietary and is the sole source vendor of their product. Taser brand is the industry standard and feasible alternate option does not exist on the market today. Director Bowd, do you want anything to add?
A part of our normal replacement cycle. They reach their life after five years, so this is just a normal reoccurring purchase that we, we do every five years depending. It's a normal replacement cycle.
Questions from the board? Comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G nine, consider waiving the bidding process and approve the purchase of two Motorola eight hundred megahertz mobile radios.
Madam Supervisor, I move to waive the bidding process and approve the purchase of two Motorola mobile radios from Motorola Solutions Incorporated in the amount of eleven thousand four hundred seventy-seven dollars, utilizing E nine-one-one funds.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by trustee Berninski. The Police Department is requesting to purchase two Motorola APX sixty-five hundred mobile police radios from Motorola in the amount of eleven thousand four hundred seventy-seven dollars for two new patrol vehicles. Due to the necessity of continuity in radio equipment, purchasing the same radio as currently owned is imperative. Therefore, the department requests to waive the bidding process and purchase the above model radio from Motorola Solutions, a sole source vendor. Director Bowd, do you have anything to add?
Do not.
Comments or questions from the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G ten, consider approval of the purchase of thirty-three Honeywell barcode scanners.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of thirty-three Honeywell barcode scanners from MSS Software and the attached budget adjustment.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by trustee Berninski. The Clerk's office is requesting thirty-three Honeywell barcode scanners. Each precinct will have a scanner for a state license or identification card. The purchase is intended to qualify for reimbursement from the Bureau of Elections twenty-two, twenty twenty-two election security grant made possible by the Consolidated Appropriations Act of two thousand eighteen. The Information Technology and Innovation Department obtained three quotes, with the lowest bid being MSS Software at five thousand seven hundred thirty-one dollars and eleven cents. A ten percent contingency has been included to accommodate any additional costs that may arise. Clerk Segras, do you have anything you want to add?
That summary is, is pretty, pretty good, so no.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G eleven, consider request to approve service agreements between Canton Township and the Partnership for the Arts and Humanities.
Madam Supervisor, I would like to take this opportunity to announce to the board a conflict of interest that I have on this item, as I currently serve as a board member of the Partnership for the Arts and Humanities. So I would ask that I be recused from voting on this item.
I move that we relieve the clerk of his duty of voting on this item, since he is a member of the Board of the Receiving Organization.
Support.
By Trustee Snyderman, supported by Trustee Berninski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, you are recused. All right, so who would like to read the motion on this one?
I can. Madam Supervisor, I move that we approve the service agreement with the Partnership for the Arts and Humanities to provide programming in the Arts and Humanities in Canton Township and the following budget amendments listed below.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski. Canton Township is committed to giving all of its residents the opportunity to experience the arts and humanities and supporting local businesses. Pursuant to this commitment, the township wishes to provide events that support and foster the arts community in Canton Township by partnering with the Partnership for the Arts and Humanities. The service agreement with the partnership, which is for $100,000 annually, establishes roles, responsibilities, cost sharing, and revenue sharing for events and activities in the township to grow the arts community. The service agreement will also support economic development in the township, particularly in Cherry Hill Village where the partnership is located. The agreement will support economic development by bringing events, arts programming, and people into the village core on a regular basis, which will in turn support local businesses. The partnership will provide the Board of Trustees with an annual report each year. Deputy Supervisor, would you like to add anything?
No, but I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay. Any questions, Stephen?
First of all, this being part of a greater initiative to create economic development and growth in the Cherry Hill Village area, I'm all for that. I think it's great, and providing a tie between the partnership and the township to both have the same interest in seeing the Cherry Hill Village area thrive, along with the partnership and the Village Theater and the businesses that are in the area, I, I think that's great. The one question I have, and I don't know if it's for Director Trumbull or Deputy Supervisor, is the fund balance transfer is only $14,000, and so, but the whole RBA is for $100,000, so can you explain that?
Yes, Director Trumbull can probably explain better than I can, she's an accountant, but due to the fact that there was, there were funds that were earmarked for economic development that were appropriated in a meeting two weeks ago that will not be fully expended, I believe the plan is to use some of the balance in those funds that had been set aside for economic development to, to pay for the service agreement. But again, Director Trumbull can answer that question better than I can.
Yeah, back in January, the board had talked about setting aside $100,000 each of the three year, for three years in a row for economic development. Some of that money has already been accounted for, for, I think it was Economic Development Consultant, and I think to do some planning over in Cherry Hill Village. So we already earmarked some of those dollars to the tune of $14,000, so we needed a little bit more budget. We have fund balance available to do so, so we're just asking for an increase in a budget for the $14,000 to make up for the difference for what this contract would, would be, what we currently have budgeted.
All right. Thank you. I'm excited for this.
Want to make a quick comment? I'm very excited about this as well, and I know it's going to help, well-needed, the Cherry Hill Village area, but, you know, the bigger picture is it's going to help the whole township with the growth, so I am looking so forward to this. It's well overdue.
Anyone else? No? So this is exciting, and you know, this is an expansion of our partnership with the, our reliance with the Partnership in Arts and Humanities, and it will support community events, arts programming, and economic development in Canton, and the opportunity to experience art and humanities along with expanded programming will be beneficial to all the residents, including underserved, disabled, and at-risk youth into the future, because we have a lot of programming going on in that area also. So this is, this is a good alliance. Thank you. All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Next item is public comment. Any public comment? Let's see, let me look online. I have three attendees online. Do you have any public comment? Public comment? Anyone in the room? Public comment? As staff members, would you like to make any comments? Okay. All right, no public comment. Anything coming up with the staff you want to talk about? Oh, we don't have, actually, John, do you want to talk about some things coming up with Leisure Services? I know Greg usually talks about it. Anything this weekend? Yep, yep.
Probably should get on mic.
Yeah, want to get on the mic?
Get on the mic. Players at home can hear.
The Big Canton Cup is this weekend.
Put me on the spot here. So yes, Memorial Cup, tens of thousands of guests will be coming to Canton, so the businesses will be very busy, so it'll be nice to see. It's always a pleasure to, to see Canton and Memorial Weekend come alive. And then after that, the weekend after, we're celebrating National Trails Day with an event at our Lower Rouge River Trail, so as you're riding Thursday, any feedback I know is appreciated, so, but we're looking forward to hosting that event. It's also combining River Day this year, so River Day and National Trails Day will be held together simultaneously on Saturday, June 4th, Lower Rouge Trail, which can be accessed off Morton Taylor from Michigan Avenue, and that's happening that morning, so come on out, lots of great activities for kids and for the family.
Doing things like beekeeping and building birdhouses and bee, beekeeping houses.
Yep, yeah, that's, that's a good stuff. Always a fun event, always a favorite. And then, of course, you know, soon after that, the Liberty Fest is coming, as we mentioned earlier, and summer is just going to be full. Thursdays are concert series, Tuesdays are terrific in the park, so we've got all kinds of, basically, seven days a week of activity going on. The farmer's market's open, of course, we're seeing great numbers out at the, out at the market. You know, the, lots of activities, activities at the warehouse, at the Village Drive factory, so lots of things happening. It's going to be a great summer in Canton. You can tell people are ready, raring to go. All of our activities are, are full with waiting lists, which is great, but summer camps are, are coming around the corner, so we've, a lot of things happening.
Great, thank you. We've also gotten, while you're up there, some comments about, and questions about the golf course and the work we're going to be doing there. You wanted to talk about that, how we're going to start that in the fall? Because we've got a lot of emails on that.
Yeah, we are, we're getting a lot of questions and feedback. You know, we know Feser Run is beloved by many, it's a very popular golf course, it's been busier than ever, but it needs some attention, as a lot of our facilities do, and we're in the midst of our capital program, and through that program, we have cart replacement scheduled, and so we're going to be starting with nine this fall. The North Nine will, will be getting replaced, and we're going to be doing that each, nine for each of the next three years. So I know people have been extremely patient, which we appreciate, we're all anxious to see that happening, so not just Feser Run, but also we'll be seeing some improvements here in the park as well with our parking lots and paths and some of the drives here in Heritage that get used by so many residents. So we are excited, but we ask our golfers to be a little patient. First project will start later on this year, at the end of summer. We've had to adjust some leagues and some outings and things like that, but we'll continue to do that, so nine this year and then nine each year for the next three.
Right, yes, we're trying to work around our golfers.
Yes, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Director Stockline?
Just a reminder, I forgot to mention that we do have that Memorial Day service behind our building on Monday at 10:00 AM, so I just wanted to thank our honor guard for doing that, is, again, this year. It's always a nice service if you can make it out for that.
Thank you. And our police and fire will be, I mean, we know that there's going to be a lot of traffic with the Canton Cups, so there's be, if you're part of it, you know, park, but if you're not part of it, you might want to stay away from that area for the weekend. But still, go to the restaurants. Stay out of the traffic, go to the restaurants. Jade?
Yeah, I just wanted to add on to something that John had mentioned on River Day and Trail Day, that we've actually identified a log jam as well, so if anyone feels like pulling up their boots and getting dirty, we're working with DPW, we've got the equipment, so we will be out there, meet at the Lower Rouge Trail head, and we'll head back and clear some logs that day as well.
Does that mean you're going to let people use chainsaws, or just-
Um, I don't think so. No.
Just pull the dead wood out.
Yeah, they can move the wood after we cut it.
Okay. Thank you.
So it should be fun.
Any other staff? All right, thank you, thank you. All right, board comments. Kate?
Just glad to be back and wishing everyone a happy Memorial Day coming up.
Stephen?
Yeah, I should clarify or explain a little more about the trail ride that I was doing, which is basically, having been on the trail a couple times this year, the weather wasn't good earlier in the spring, but it just started to warm up and then cooled down again, but there are some areas of concern that I saw on the trail, safety and things like that, so I discussed it with Director Smith, and we decided, and, and the supervisor, and we decided it'd be great to just get out there and, and take a look. I invited a couple of friends of mine who ride a lot also. So anyone's welcome on Thursday, but it also looks like it's going to be a terrible weather day on Thursday, so we may, we may postpone that, we'll talk about that, but just going to ride the trail from right out here at Palmer Road all the way down the Michigan Avenue and, and then back up the ITC corridor on it, just to take a look at things that we can do to improve it, and Jade has invited some of his staff to do it and-
And I did invite a first responder to come with us as well. Director Stockline will be with us, so we will have protection out on the trails at all times.
Very good idea, and John, you're welcome to come too, I know, I know, I should have invited you as well, but I'll let you know. Oh, they did? Okay, great.
Thank you. Diane?
I too want to wish everyone a happy Memorial Day, and then the River Day, which is a very fun day for families, so hopefully people can come out and attend that, very educational. And then, piggybacking on what Trustee Snyderman had said, just reminding people now that summer's out, we have a lot of walkers and bikers and motorcycles, so just, you know, be cautious as you're driving out there. Lot of construction going on, and people are busy and in a rush, but we want to make sure everybody's safe, so.
Thank you. Michael?
Okay, so, one, I am very excited and very impressed at the quality and speed of the work being done on Canton Center Road, so kudos to Municipal Services Division, Engineering, I know our contractor, Great Lakes, I think is the one doing it. It was great to see. I took the family to watch them pour some of that concrete, and they, they loved it. Well, Jack did, my son. Outside of that, the Clerk's Office, we are, we are actually coming up, one, people's voting location is more than likely to have changed since the last time they voted, so for those, those individuals who typically vote by mail through absentee and are on the permanent list, which is almost half of our registered voters at this point, you will be getting an application for an absentee ballot in the next couple of weeks, and regardless of whether or not your polling location or your precinct number has changed, that will not impact your status as an absentee voter. I am an absentee voter. So after we have sent out those applications, we will send out the, the voter ID cards, and that will alert people to their new location if they choose to vote in person on Election Day. And then, for those who want to know more about the process, we tend to mail ballots the last week of June, so they usually arrive in mailboxes either that week or the first week of July. It's kind of crazy to think about it, but very soon, voters will have, many voters in Canton will have their ballots in their hand for the August 2 primary. Other than that, if you want to, if you're concerned or want to know about your precincts changes, you can go on to the Clerk's website, we have an interactive GIS map that Municipal Services Division and IT helped, helped us create. It's a really cool tool, and it will tell you which district you are in.
Great, thank you. Tanya?
First of all, I wanted to wish everyone a happy Memorial Day, and also the, the people that are going to be participating, the kids that are going to be participating in the Canton Cup, wishing them all the best. So also, this, this is May, is, this is my first board meeting this month, so this is, this is the month of Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, so we, we did something exciting today, we had a cable recording for, you know, we spoke to some members in the community about what API Heritage Month is about, and we will continue the recording tomorrow, and I'm very excited to see what the cable is going to produce from that, and we are having a discussion so that people are aware of, because based on our recent census, 19% of our community is Asian Americans, so I'm very excited about that. That's about it.
Great, thank you, thank you. So we have jobs still, we have a lot of jobs, labor's jobs, cutting lawns, so if anybody needs a job out there, your kids or husband, please send them our way, get them out of the house, and happy Memorial Day, as everyone said, what we do. So anyone needing anything that, from the township, don't be afraid to email and call, some of you have been doing that, I think we've answered a lot of the questions that we're seeing now, but have a great day. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? No? Meeting adjourned.